May I have your attention, please? At this time, please turn off your cell phones. Please conduct yourself in a professional manner. No outburst will be tolerated. Subject to his immediate removal from these chambers. Thank you.
The meeting will come to order. It is a regular meeting, Thursday, January the 28th, 2016, 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. And thy kingdom come. For thou art in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the glory of it, and the life of us. To establish your quorum, we have Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilman Tejada. We have Councilman O'Neal, Councilman Mieto, and Councilman Miller. We have a quorum. And now is the U.S. Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, the Pledge of Allegiance convenes Texas from one state and government of one indivisible.
Thank you. Now we will open it up to citizens' comments. The maximum time on leave is five minutes. Please step up to the podium.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. Would you please state for the record, state your name?
Yes, I am Debbie Ball, and I'm here representing the All City Youth Programs this evening. Um, may I pass this to each of you? It's just a packet, so you know what I'm talking about. Okay, I, oh, can I put this down without breaking? Yes, you can. Yes. I don't know. Okay. Oh, can I read this person? Oh, yes. Sorry.
We fought in Panama to overthrow Noriega. I know what a banana republic is. We in America live by the rule of law. And your boss is sitting out here. The citizens of Florisville have in fact requested a special election. If you choose to blow off their request tonight, then, I'm sorry, you're no different than Manuel Noriega. He followed what he wanted to do. The other Latin American countries that I was in followed what they wanted to do, no rule of law. So I'm hoping and begging you to listen to the people and not react as a tyrant as they do in Latin America. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, City Council, and citizens. My name is Sarah Kennedy, and I am here to speak with you tonight as a citizen, a citizen of the United States of America, a citizen of the great state of Texas, and a citizen of our beautiful city, Florisville. On Monday, January 11, 2016, about two weeks ago, I stood here and I read to you the first two paragraphs of the Declaration of Independence. And I see there's copies of it over there. I will not read it again. It was an action. That document was an action of the Second Continental Congress on July 4, 1776. It was unanimous declaration of the then 13th United States of America. As copies of that document have been provided, I'm not going to read it again. However, I would like to highlight the last sentence. If you look on the back of the second page, it's kind of small print right above the signatures. Of course, they're not signatures, they're just the typed-out names. It says, "And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor." And I love that because it implies and it says out loud, "We have sacred honor, they had sacred honor." And they were affirming that, and I think that's awesome. Tonight, I'm sharing verbatim the First Amendment from the Bill of Rights. The Bill of Rights is often referred to as the First Ten Amendments. These were all ratified on December 15, 1791, years after 1776. Amendment one says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the exercise thereof, free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble, and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Tonight, I and several others will exercise this stated guaranteed right to assemble peaceably and to petition you, the city government, for a redress of grievances. According to the Merriam-Webster dictionary, redress means "to set right." The legal definition is "to set right, relieve, or remedy, or means of seeking relief or remedy. It can be putting right or wrong by compensation for injuries sustained, recovery or restitution for harm or injury, damages, or equitable relief." Basically, it's the right to redress, the right to redress refers to the right to a relief or remedy. And I think that's what everybody's saying, is I pray they will relieve us of the silliness of what's going on right now, the grandfather amendment, not allowing the city manager or the officers to do their job based on the ordinance that was already passed. According to Webster's Grievance, is an act of ordinance condition considered to be a justifiable reason for complaint, a cause of grief. The grievance is this council's insistence of disrespecting the voices of the citizens of Florisville, its Christian pastors and community leaders, the voice, the united voice, to restrict the locations and operations of the eightliners, the gambling, game rooms, however you want to call them, for the well-being of this community. I am personally grieved, and I have been grieving with the community about ordinance number You have given lip service to the hearing our grievances part, but there's a photo or an image I often think of, Saturday Night Live, you know, the bar where they put their fingers in their ears and they say, "La, la, 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 la." Right? Remember that? That's what image comes to me. It is a representation of how your hearing often looks. Please listen tonight. Please reconsider. And please hear, feel, see, and do the will of the people. Do the right thing, the majority, the moral majority of the citizens of this city. If you consider only the amount of money and not the overall cost of the eightliners, you might well say with the actor in The Godfather, remember the Godfather movie? Mario Fusa said, "Oh, it's not personal, it's only business." When did he say that? What did he do right after he said that? What is your morally responsible best action? Thank you.
My name is Jocelyn Kay, and I am the office manager of Eagle Ford Urgent Care, and we are personally affected by these game rooms. And I come before you to just, I could talk for hours about the inconvenience, I could talk for hours about parking, the trash, I could talk for hours on it, I could show pictures. But what I'm really talking about is the lack of commitment from the city. We've been here since 2013. We've supported the schools, we've supported, and not just in Florisville, the Pope, La Verne, Stockdale. We're here as, we're family-owned, we're a very small group of people. We hired locally, and we support y'all's families. We are here to help you, and allowing a game room with 70 machines less than 20 feet away from our facility is ridiculous. My staff can't even park in regular parking spots because we need it for our patients, patients of probably some of y'all that we've seen, or your kids, or your grandkids. It's an ongoing battle, and I just wanted to put a face to the problem we face on a daily basis. I'm not going to knock a business, everybody's business owners, I'm not going to knock it. They want to be somewhere else, I'm fine with it. I just feel like it's affecting our business. We're at a 30% difference from last year at this time of the year, and that's factual numbers, that's just not something being made up. And we get phone calls all the time, "Hey, how long is the wait because there's so many cars?" Well, the cars aren't for us, the cars are for the game room. Or, "We were going to come earlier, but we saw a bunch of cars in the parking lot." That's a distraction, that's affecting our business, that's affecting employees that are citizens of Florisville. That's a big chain reaction. We tried working with the game room on the parking issue, the trash. When my staff comes in at 8:00 in the morning and has to clean up the parking lot so it doesn't look like a hot mess, something's wrong. So I just wanted to voice and put a face to a company that this is affecting personally. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, fellow citizens, my name is Fred Gonzalez, and I live in Florisville. I'm sure you have had enough negative feedback at this point, and I think some of it you need to listen to. However, I'm not here to complain. In fact, I'm here to say, as a resident of Florisville, that I appreciate all that you do. Sometimes we forget that you give of your time, talents, and work hard at it without compensation. And then to top it off, you get berated when people disagree with you. I for one, thank you for your service. I thank those of you that are under fire. You have stood firm to assure that folks follow the rules, someone needs to do that. It would have been a lot easier if, as someone suggested, you just ignore what's going on. After all, where you live is where you say you live. Well, all of us have heard this saying, and that is, "All it takes for somebody who would do us harm to succeed is for us to do nothing." Again, I thank you for your service. I know a lot of us citizens feel as I do, but they may not be as vocal as I am. I would ask for an amen right now, but our officer said, "No demonstrations." Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you for that positive input. Anyone else? All right, no further comments. We'll go on to the presentations and discussion. The first one is employee acknowledgements by the HR Director. No, I'm sorry, let me back up. I forgot the minutes. Did y'all read the minutes? Okay. Under all business, a CNA to observe meeting minutes with a special meeting on January the 7th, 2016.
Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes, and if this is going to be the official record of this city council, I move to table these minutes. There are incomplete sentences, significant number of misspellings, misquotes, sentences that don't make any sense in these minutes. I don't know if it was a computer error or how it got put together, but I move we send them back.
Any other comments?
If we could note on the minutes for today, that Councilman Miller indicates there's errors on the minutes, I'll second that motion to table.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? To table. Okay. Madam Secretary?
4-0, ma'am.
4-0, motion carries. Now we'll go to the presentations. The employee acknowledgements by our HR Director, Margaret.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Roy Ida, who is here to commend some employees that gave excellent customer service.
Okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Citizens, my name is Roy Ida. I'm Spanish, English is my second language. I was born in the United States, raised out of the country, and this is why you notice the accent that I have. So during the period of time I had dealt with the city in requesting services in regard to construction and building a house and permits and so on, and these employees had gone beyond their duty to provide that service without no problem. So I just would like to say that they set an example for other employees to follow. I do appreciate the work, and I asked, I sent a letter to the city manager to please acknowledge these employees for their standing work.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your comments.
Mayor, this time I'm going to call the paid employees.
Okay.
Just to let you know, Mr. Ida wanted to take these employees out to lunch, and since we are, it's against our city policy to accept any gifts for work, the city decided to acknowledge them.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
From our water department, we have Robert Vadera.
I'm the rest of the water.
From the office staff, we have Mindy Riley. We'd also like to acknowledge Gilbert Silva. So as always, we thank him, we know these guys doing an excellent job in helping the customers, as always.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item presentation is Holiday Extravaganza by Councilwoman DeHada.
Actually, I just wanted to clarify a question on the newspaper article that came out last week, and if Mr. Vieda can just update us a little bit more on the revenue and expenses. Last week's news article reported, I think, a $22,000 loss, and that was contrary to your report that you had given to the council that same week.
Yes, sir. I'm Mayor, Councilman. Yes, on January 7, I gave a report here to all of you and the citizens, just quickly highlighting some of the numbers, some of the revenues, some of the expenses. And then I believe on the 20th of January, Wilson County News, based on paperwork that we gave them for open records request, and that we also provided to each one of you, Councilmen, printed some inaccurate numbers. The publisher, an editor of the paper, actually called me several days later, one day later, actually, to acknowledge the discrepancies in the numbers, and to let me know that they wanted to make sure that the numbers came out correctly and that they saw numbers in the article that were not correct, that were inaccurate, that were inflated, inflated on the negative side. And so I went over there and met with them and went through the numbers with them and explained and answered any questions that they had. Today, unfortunately, I don't like my name sitting there, but on the front page of the paper on the bottom, they had a article that explained the numbers and showed that the numbers matched up with the numbers that I presented to you on January 7. Any questions for me?
Will the article be reprinted, or has it already been reprinted with the correct numbers?
Yes, ma'am. It came out on range 3A on Wednesday, January 20. Extravaganza ends in the red with close to 22,000 in loss. Today it came out, and it was the same numbers I gave you last time, at 8,829. I believe when I mentioned it in the last meeting, it was close to 8,800. I didn't have the exact number, but after we talked to them, I sat down and gave them those updated numbers, and they were very, I was very thankful that they actually called us to tell us that they needed to correct things and make those numbers correct. They didn't want to be pointed out that they were putting out inaccurate information.
As I recall, you stated that, given sufficient time, lead time, that this could be a profitable event? Did you not say that?
Absolutely. I mean, any type of event you do, you need to plan and plan accordingly, and something like this takes a minimum of six to nine months to do and do right. I mean, do it exactly with sponsorships and things like that. I mean, we are working with hotel, tax money, and citizen money, we want to make sure it's going correctly.
And not just necessarily this event, but any other event, I mean, given sufficient time, planned, organized, efficiently.
Any event. Like I mentioned before, we were looking into doing the Wilson County Fair, but not until 2017. It would take that long to actually coordinate and do it correctly with sponsorships and do it right.
Tony, could you tell us why it's important to hold events, city-sponsored events? Not just the Holiday Extravaganza, but other city-sponsored events?
I think any city entity, or any taxpayer that has the opportunity to put on an event, it's important because we need to build community. I mean, we need to build community, whether it's crossing cultural lines, which I think is extremely important.
Yes.
But without events, how do you know how the community is? It's great to see them have a smile on their face, great to hear them talk good things about our community, about all of us, and not doing events, we're going to put the onus on everybody else to come up with it. We have opportunities to take advantage of here in our community. When I say community, I mean Florisville, but it's not just Florisville, it's everywhere around us because there's thousands of people that drive through our city every day that don't live here, but they take part in our city, they spend money here, and I think it's key that we do that.
Exactly. And I think the answer, I'm looking forward, maybe either Henry or Connie can answer it, but during our budget process, our financial advisor told us that if we don't have any events out there, we're losing approximately, what, 150 a year in that area? So it's our responsibility to host events to bring that revenue into our facility, city-sponsored events. You know, and cities all across Texas, all across the United States do this, either through sports events, concerts, whatever it may be. Not only does it put revenue into the general fund, is that where the money went into, the general fund? Where did it go?
To 570.
Which is what?
Which is the direct supply for 4A.
Oh, into the 4A, okay, exactly, to the payoff of the debt for the 4A. So it's important, the Holiday Extravaganza, somebody made a comment earlier on Facebook that it's a Hispanic event. No, it's not a Hispanic event. There's no reason why it can't be, you know, country-western, it can't be a jazz. It's an event to bring people into Florisville, to stay at our hotels, to spend money in our restaurants, and also for revenue to go back into the 4A fund. It should be a positive event, and we shouldn't have a negative feeling about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you so much for coming down. The next item, 2C, Report on Hands-Free Ordinance, number 2015-031. Mr. Councilman Miller?
I asked for this report for two reasons. One, when the issue of signs came up in the discussion, it was told to the council that the cost of the signs wouldn't be much more than $500. I questioned that from the efficacy of this ordinance. As it turns out, it was close to $7,000 for the signs. Second reason I asked for this is in the ordinance that was passed, just one second to find it here, it says, "Only warning citations may be issued for the first 30 days following the effective date of this ordinance, so that an educational effort by the city of Florisville may be conducted to inform the public about the importance and requirements of this new ordinance." So I asked the question, "What did we do?" And that was what I was hoping to be informed of, what we did in the first 30 days of this ordinance that was passed on November 19, to educate the public about the ordinance and the importance and requirements.
Mayor, City Council? Yes. Would you like to address that, Mrs. Trump?
Yes, ma'am, some of it. I did receive an email, I believe it was January 24, requesting some information, or received it back, requesting information about the hands-free sign.
I'm sorry, can you turn the mic?
I received some information, a request from Councilman Miller in reference to some of the hand-filled signs, and he requested to be on the agenda. On the cover of issue for 2C, the signs were $5,525.08. I do want to say we ordered a total of eight signs. The sizes of the signs were very large, but it is designed by text dot, because all of these signs are in text dots right away. So text dot has designed the sign. They are special ordered signs, and they specify what the sign would say, these signs would design, but also the size of the sign and location of the sign was by text dot. The signs were required to be in place by January 11, which we did do so, and then I think one of the questions Councilman Miller asked was how much labor, the total cost of what it would be in labor. Labor was $1,396, and attached to that, you see an individual, how many hours per cruise, so we just took an average of what the settlement would be, and that's how we came up with the cost. In reference to the, that's the engineering part of it. In reference to the education, I would have to acquiesce to the chief of police who I believe is here to discuss distracted driving training, and also citations and those questions that Mr. Miller has.
Did the $7,000 include the labor?
Yes, the total is $6,921.14, and that would include the labor.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. To answer your question, Councilman Miller, citations, there are no citations issued as of kickoff date, which was January 11, 2016. There were two warnings actually issued currently, as we speak. During the warning part of it, which started off in the first 30 days of the distracted driving, there were only 10, 11 warning citations issued during that period. As far as the class that we are speaking of, distracted driving class, that is going to be February 5, and it's at no cost to us.
So councillor, since the ordinance says we have to provide the training and education prior to enforcing this ordinance, since that is not scheduled until February, can we in fact enforce this ordinance?
No. It hasn't happened before.
Actually, there was a scheduling issue with the gentleman that's supposed to come down and provide us with that information, but...
But my point is, if the ordinance says we're going to provide the training before we enforce the ordinance, okay, we can't issue any citations until after that training is occurred, is that...
You can issue the warning, come here with it. Proposal penalty?
The answer to your question, Mr. Miller, is we can't do other than you asked for, but if one of the officers by chance issues more than a warning, when it comes to municipal court, it will be dismissed. Thank you. I've heard you the first time, but it was for the current administration. And we do make a distinction in court, by the by, for officers who issue a warning, and then it gets converted into a charge, we frequently have that issue come before the judge, and we rule on the latter, which is the warning. My concern was the date of the ordinance and the 30 days, and not having complied with what we said we were going to do in that first 30 days. And your ordinance doesn't really give you a lot of latitude until you get to court, and that's where it comes. Chief, no doubt.
Any other discussion?
One other question. This cost of the signs, I don't know where the city manager, oh, clearly, since this was passed after the budget was approved, this was not a budget item. Are we going to see a budget amendment to cover these costs?
Yes, sir, as my member said, this will require a budget amendment. As one of my directors, I'll say later on in my report, that we have to do budget amendments in February for the first quarter. Our comptroller is preparing for that, as we're meeting with all different departments to not only do budget amendments for the first quarter, as well as budget line item adjustments that we may or may not have to make, but this will probably come from general fund 301 reserves, is that correct? Yes, so that's what we anticipate, because we did not anticipate such a large number to do those signs. They are very large signs, as you can see from the invoice, by text invoice. The signs are actually, they have to have special post, not that we have in we have in town, we had to go pick them up, and they're sixty-six by forty-eight is a sign, and they are special ordered. We have one extra just in case. Sixty-six by forty-eight is the size of the signs, and so it has to have a third bracket so that it can stay. You can imagine, there's trucks go by, they're set up because of the speed, so text dot, there's a, there's a sturdy sign, if a truck goes by, it shouldn't knock it down. But we anticipate this being one of the budget amendments that we will be bringing forward to the council in February as part of the directives to the city council, to the city manager, but I have spoken to our comptroller records to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your presentation, Councilman Miller?
There was more questions on my part, but I think they've answered all my questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have Operations Director Project Update. Is he here tonight?
No, ma'am. He actually came in earlier today, and he was spraining my saw. I think he's coming down with the flu, I asked him to please go home, he had a fever. He probably won't either be in tomorrow. He has the report there, before you all have any questions, I can go through it, or you can just take it, and we can have him come to the next meeting, hopefully he'll find, I look to you for direction.
Mayor, would you mind running over the street pocket at least?
No, I don't mind at all, okay. So one of the things is that they're here, they're mobilized, and as you see here on the street program, they've start, they've sent out the notices, and then these are the streets that are reconstruction, and the streets that are chip sealed. So you remember when we made the presentation with M and S, reconstruction streets, I mean, they tear them all up, make them new, and the chip seals, they're just adding another layer onto those streets. So these are the streets, I believe we have in the lobby a map that indicates them where they are. It is going pretty good, the cold weather doesn't help us, but again, I'll say that Haas paving out of Pleasanton gave out notices to start the construction with the residents impacted by the construction, so they have given out those notices, we're waiting on some warm weather, they will work on the weekends, and I hear there's going to be eighty degrees on Sunday, so hopefully Saturday is Sunday, so that we're hoping for, as I said, Haas paving has worked with the city.